The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice had been transmitted to the Korea News on Monday, October 5th, 2020, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, let's begin with the roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilman McKenna.
Present.
Councilman McKenna?
Present.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom.
Present.
Vice President Armati.
Here.
And Council President Hockaday.
Here.
We have all members present and accord.
Okay, there being no discussion items for today. This evening, we'll move to the consideration of public hearing. Second reading and final passage up, and there's none of that as well. So we'll next move to the public comments limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinances introduced on first reading. So a total of 30 minutes will be allocated for this. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized and you'll be unmuted. Once that occurs, give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. All right, do we see anyone yet?
There's no one with their hands raised.
Okay, well, seeing none, I'll accept a motion to close public comment on resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be introduced on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this public comments is now closed. All right, are there any comments from council on resolutions 27420 through 27820?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
On Resolution 277-20, what are the benefits of designating a deputy custodian of records? Am I supposed to ask all my questions at one time because I have one on?
No, you can just ask them where you want. So I thought we could start there.
Yes, Councilwoman, that's to streamline the process. Currently, that office probably receives anywhere from 20 to 30 requests. That allows the public, realtors, attorneys, to be able to file their request directly with that office, and that office can respond directly to the requesters. That similar designation of deputy custodian has also been made with the police department and with the fire department in the past, and it has worked out well. So it's streamlining the process.
Okay, thank you.
I guess to follow up with that, is there any change in pay? Is there any financial impact in that designation?
No, there is not. The director would normally be responsible for those. Every office has someone who's responsible for fulfilling over requests. This mainly requires that that office can respond directly to the requestors, and the quester can file it directly with that office. So there is no additional duties. It's just a designation legally so that that office is designated as the deputy custodian so it can be filed directly.
Okay, sounds like a good idea. Hopefully it also leads to more efficiency and quicker times for realtors and attorneys getting information from our city. What was the other question, Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, so for Resolution 278-20, that establishes standards and procedures for emergency remote meetings. In the resolution, it speaks to allowing people to email or mail in their comments ahead of the meeting. So if we could just kind of talk about what that would look like and where they would email their public comments to ahead of the meeting?
So if adopted, I'll be working with IT department to create a designated email address solely for public comments. The public comments would have to be received by email at some type of deadline prior to the meeting, in which, if there's time, it would be read into the record, given the same exact time that would be given to public speakers.
Thank you.
Okay.
And just to note, this was a requirement from the Division of Local Government Services that every public body must adopt these procedures for remote meetings.
Good. Yeah, you know, and looking at the standards, it looks like we were in compliance with most of those already, but just didn't have an official policy. So thank you for getting that together so that we can be in compliance with the law. Any other questions from council regarding these resolutions? You know, I did want to say just a thing about 27620, recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day as the second Monday in October, which is usually Columbus Day. I think, you know, it's a holiday that I think that we should, you know, recognize. It's something I fully support. I know, especially Councilwoman Davis certainly raised it. It's something that, you know, in the circles, if you're following social media with respect to Black Lives Matter and the activism that's on the ground, this is one of the areas of many areas that we need to go after in cities like ours, where we can just begin to change the tide or acknowledge those who haven't been acknowledged historically. And I think that this resolution is a step in that direction. So we want to keep these type of things going. So, you know, I appreciate council members, if they choose to support this, for supporting it and keep it coming, Councilwoman Davis, because we want to make sure that we're progressive as a city in these respects. Any other questions from council or comments? Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Okay, these resolutions have been approved. Mr. Clerk, please proceed with the remainder of the resolutions.
Yes, Council President, moving on to Resolution 27920, authorizing an additional appropriation for McManaman, Scotland, and Baumann LLC.
All right, are there any questions from council members? Looking for questions. All right, if there are none, can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? If not, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 28020, authorizing settlement in the matter of Tanya Matthews versus City of Plainfield.
Any questions from council members? Okay, if there are none, may we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Let them be known, if not, this resolution is now approved.
Resolution 28120, authorizing appropriation for NW Financial Group LLC.
Are there any questions from council members regarding this resolution? Okay, if not, can we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 28220, authorizing approval to amend the calendar year 2020 municipal budget to insert special items of revenue.
Okay, looking for questions from council members. Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Second.
Thank you, Clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 28320, authorizing approval to cancel the 2020 taxes bill due to a 100% disabled veteran exemption effective March 24th, 2020.
Council members?
Yes, I have a question.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
So Mr. West, when we get these requests, how, like, how do we get them? So like, how do we get them and how do we know, like, oh, this is a, like, because we're getting it in the middle of the year? So is it like, as people find out about it, they then apply for it, and then it's then sent to us? How does that, like, chain of command work, I guess?
That would be the chain of command in terms of the rulings. In terms of the tax collector, he gets a notification from the tax assessor that the property is now, or the individual has been classified as disabled, you know, and, you know, that usually comes from the county office of taxation.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Seeing and hearing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 28420, authorizing approval to cancel the 2020 taxes bill to 100% disabled veteran exemption effective January 1, 2020.
Any questions from council?
Is that effective March 24th? Are we looking at the same one, 28420?
The next one.
So this, two separate ones, two separate cancellations?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the effective date. Is it March 24th or January that he read?
This one is January.
Oh, skip the one, 284 hits March. Okay, I see. We did 284, right? We're on 284. Is that correct?
We're on 284, correct.
Right, so that's a March 24th on my paper.
83, oh, second.
I have to go back to it.
January 1, 2020.
Yeah, on what I have, 283 was March 24th and 284 is January 1st.
Okay, maybe you all have new papers. I printed out the one that came.
Try reloading the one, the agenda that you have in the system if you can.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay. All right, can we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? All right, and hearing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 285, authorizing the cancel of a municipal lien.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So what factors go into us canceling municipal liens? Is it like, everything is paid up, or how does that work out?
In this particular case, it turns out that the property that had the lien, you know, should have been assigned to a property on Morris Avenue or Morris Street. So what's happening in this case is that the owner has agreed to pay the taxes owed, and once the individuals paid those taxes, we will be combining those two lots. We were showing the lot vacant and taxes hadn't been paid, but it in fact belonged to a different property owner. So that's why it's being canceled. There should have never been a lien placed.
I'm confused. So you said that they have to pay up the taxes, but there shouldn't have been a lien placed?
The property belongs to the owner of 220 Morris Street. We were showing the property as 1110, you know, dash 16 West Third Street, and we're treating this as an individual property that hadn't been paying its taxes. It turns out that the records of that change, you know, never made it through the system, and those two properties should have been one in the same. They need to be combined as one property. The owner of the Morris Street property has agreed to pay the taxes that are past due. And once that individual does that, we will merge the two properties, and that problem will go away for the future.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to make it so confusing.
Any additional questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is not moved, thank you.
Resolution 28620, authorizing the award of professional services contract to Anoni Associates.
Are there any questions from council members? Okay, hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is now approved.
Resolution 28720, authorizing a right-of-entry agreement between the City of Plainfield and 803 South Avenue Urban Renewal LLC.
Any questions from council members? Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 28820, authorizing change order number one final for the City Hall standby generator project.
Are there any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resolution is now approved.
Resolution 28920, authorizing an application and the execution of a grant agreement with the Union County Arts Grant Program.
Are there any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Seeing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 29020, adopting a non-discrimination policy for individual disabilities.
Are there any questions from council? Seeing and hearing none, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this resolution is now approved, thank you.
Resolution 29120, authorizing approval for a lien placement for the property cleanup of 11 properties.
Do we have any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
Are we seeing an uptick in abatements now, like, during the pandemic, where people don't have time to really keep their properties up? Or is this, like, on trend for what we would see for this time of year?
It's more on trend for we see this time of year, right, Councilwoman?
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes, Council President.
Go right ahead, Councilman.
Director Dabney, what's the rate of average abatement? Is it according to what size the property is, or is it standard?
Based on square footage of property, how much litter and debris is on a property, et cetera, no vegetation, that's what we base it all on.
And how often is it, is there an increase?
There is really no increases based on the personnel, the salaries of the personnel, and the amount of debris that's taken off the property, yeah.
Thanks, Director, that's all, Council President.
Any additional questions from council members? If not, can I have a motion and a second?
Moved.
Second.
All vote in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Hearing and seeing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 29220, authorizing the transfer of a certain financial agreement between the City of Plainfield and Sleepy Hollow Fleet Developers Urban Renewal LLC to Quinn Owner Urban Renewal LLC.
Any questions from council members? Councilman McKenna?
Actually, I had, Mr. Jones, I had played phone tag today. I had a question regarding the principles within the change, what the reason for the change is. I think this is their second change from the original, if I recall.
Director Jackson?
This is in conjunction with the sale of the property by JMF Properties to a new owner, which is the Quinn Urban Renewal LLC. So this is in agreement with the financial agreement where the city has to concur with the transfer of the financial agreement associated with the sale of the property. Nothing is changing in the financial agreement itself.
That's good, that wasn't my question. Who are the principals of this legal entity?
It's in the attachment, which I don't have before me.
I didn't see it, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see it in the back.
Okay.
I could look again.
Let me just check real quickly with the, we can move on to the next one, with the attorney that has the principles associated with that. Okay. Can we get, can we ask Ayesha Cooper to join in? Ayesha Cooper?
Sure, is she on the line?
Yes, she should be on the line.
Okay.
There she is.
Hello?
Hi.
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, excellent.
Welcome.
Thank you.
The question is, who are the principals with the new entity that the property is being transferred to?
I am looking that up. I will have that information for you shortly.
Okay.
Ms. Cooper, are you an attorney for the city or for the renewal?
For the city.
City.
Cities, McManaman, Scotland, and Baumann is the city's redevelopment council.
Oh, okay, I didn't know you were with them, thank you.
Oh.
Sorry, we should have introduced her.
Oh, Ayesha Cooper. McManaman, Scotland, and Baumann.
Thanks.
I have met with the principals, I just don't remember the name.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find their, there should be a disclosure.
In the document.
Mm-hmm. Can we, I apologize, can we move to the second one while I try to find this document on our system?
Yeah, do you have additional questions, Councilwoman McKenna?
No, that was my, on that one, no, that was it.
Council President, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
So Director Jackson, are we saying with this resolution that now the new owners will get the same pilot agreement that the previous owners received?
Yes, and that's part of the original financial agreement that allows for these types of transfers when there is a sale of a property.
So this property was just built, how often does this happen where a project is built and then it is sold? And the Quinn has only been up for what, a year maybe, if that long? Is this like a normal process in development where developers build it and then they sell it within the year?
That is a normal process for developers. They can sell the project at any time. They could sell it at, after they've gotten all of the approvals, and someone else builds it. They could build it and then sell it, or they can build it and lease up and then sell, but that's a normal activity for developers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members while Mrs. Cooper obtains the information for Councilwoman McKenna?
I'm sorry, did anybody else freeze up besides myself because I didn't hear that?
No, I did not freeze up. Can't speak for others.
Council President, can we go on to the next one while she's doing that?
The next resolution?
Yes.
Let me get an idea of how long Ayesha's, you think she's gonna take? I don't want to skip around too much.
Okay.
Ayesha, what do you think?
Just a few moments, I'm asked, I actually just called in my coworker to ask her to forward it to me. Because I don't have it in front of me, I apologize.
Okay, well, we can just come back to the resolution, we can.
Yeah, I'll raise my hand as soon as I have it again.
Okay. I don't want to move forward until we have everyone's questions asked, so. Clerk, what do you think, we should just table this and come back once we get the information?
Yeah, we can just skip over it and come back.
You don't want to table.
All right, let's just skip over it. All right.
So Resolution 293 now, 29320, directing the planning board to reexamine the TODD south redevelopment plan?
Are there any questions from council?
Is that resolution, are we on, I'm sorry?
We're on 293.
294, 20, 29320?
29320.
29320.
29320, yeah.
Any questions, council members regarding 29320?
Council President, I have to apologize, I was kicked off, I just logged back in, so pardon me.
Not a problem at all.
Council President, I have a question.
Sure.
Is this resolution because of the settlement we voted on last month?
Yes, we have to take official action related to that property.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, let's, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved, second then, second, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 29420, authorizing the planning board to conduct an area in need of redevelopment investigation of the West End Industrial Corridor.
Any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
In this planning board study, are we looking to have condemnation or non-condemnation plans, or is that something that the planning board would eventually decide?
This is a non-condemnation study for the West End Industrial Corridor.
Are we looking to keep that, are we looking to change the zoning for that area from industrial to something else?
No, we'd like to, this is in association with the NJIT, NJII Innovation Project, where we're trying to do advanced manufacturing and digital manufacturing, factory. So we need to study this corridor as a redevelopment area. Some ideas that we're considering is a master development to create this area. So it's really to enhance the industrial character, but to improve it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So be it.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 29520, referring the previously adopted and amended redevelopment plan for 197 city-owned in foreclosure and bankrupt properties to the planning board for a seventh assessment and recommendation of additional plan amendments.
Any questions from council members regarding this motion? So resolution, I should say.
I just have one question, are we, we're mending it to add the additional block and lots that are referenced? That's what I understand, we're adding to that list?
Yes, that is correct, that we're adding to the list of properties. What the plan didn't anticipate was that there would be properties that would be adjacent to each other by the same owner and could be developed. and could be developed by that owner. So originally the plan anticipated individual development of each lot.
Good. Any further questions? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So move. Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 29620 authorizing the award of professional services contract to Pononi Associates.
Any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion and a second?
Both.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions?
No.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Uh, you're muted, Ashley.
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
No.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockenay?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. 29620 has been adopted. Resolution 29720.
Um, I'm, pardon, uh, uh, Council President?
Yes.
Um, I have the, the ownership.
Information?
Requested regarding resolution number 292-20.
Okay, we'll go back to that now. We're, we're back on 292-20.
I think you wanna play the last one. Is that right?
Let's get school. Don't mind her.
Oh.
Oh. I apologize. Uh, the new owners, uh, the new owners of the property will be GMF Real Estate LLC. The CEO of that company is Jay, Jay Lobel. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that name, L-O-B-E-L-L. The other entity is Premier Properties Holding LLC. The CEO is Jakes, Jakes Adler, and the COO is Isaac Kluck.
Thank you for that. Uh, are there any additional questions on 292-20? And if not, then I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt that resolution.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? This resol, that resolution is now approved. Okay, thank you clerk. We can go back to the final resolution now.
Resolution 29720 designating PL 836 Plainfield LLC as redevelopment for the redevelopment of certain properties.
Are there any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, Director Brown, if you can just talk about what this project is going to be, as well as what are the community benefits to this project?
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, the first part of the project is located on Fourth Street and Wachang Avenue, which is the building directly across from the Police Division, uh, Department, excuse me. It is going to be adaptively reused, the existing building. It's about fif, it will have 5,600 square feet of commercial on the ground floor, which already exists, and six units on the second floor. It's like the top two floors. Uh, the next part of that is located within frontages on East Fifth Street, Cleveland Avenue, and East Fourth Street. What is proposed is a six-story mixed-use development with 6,200 square feet of commercial. I'm sorry. And 118 market-grade residential units.
Thank you. Um, and the community benefit the city will be receiving from this project?
$100,000. Well, $125,000, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, just a follow-up question. Um, so it's gonna be mixed-use residential and commercial. Do we know what the parking or parking requirements are going to be for this space?
So I can't fully talk about the parking because that's something that has to go before zoning, and they will determine if this project actually meets the requirement or if they need a variance.
Okay. Um, and a follow-up to the question about, um, community benefits, is 125,000, is that like the standard that we've been receiving from other projects? Or is that like on the higher end? Um, because my concern is with this project being near the train station and one of the premier locations in the city that we're always looking to develop, it seems a little low in terms of community benefits. Are they doing anything else, like fixing up any parks? Contributing to anywhere else in the city?
You want, you want me to take that, Director Brown?
Sure.
So in response to community benefits, it's really typically based on the size of the project. And so that number varies, based, that is a reasonable number for the size of the project. I don't know the total amount of dollars at this point, but it's the reasonable amount for the size of the project. Something that is much bigger, like what Steve Chung is doing in TODD West, is requiring a lot of community benefits, including improvements to the park and street skates and all of those kinds of things. It really is based on the size of the project.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna? Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockenay?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. 29720 has been adopted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we now come to ordinances on first reading. Clerk, would you please read MC 2020-19 by title?
Yes, MC 2020-19 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 10, Bus Stops, Schedule 12, Bus Stops Part 1, Municipal Roads, Paragraph 12.
Are there any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
So, um, this changing of bus stops is going where the pedestrian mall would be. But the last conversation about the mall, it wasn't going to be a thing that was paid for by the city. It was gonna be paid for by developers. So are we saying now that the developers are on board to pay for the pedestrian mall and it's going to move forward? Or are we doing this without having that guaranteed first? And we're just moving bus stops with the hope that the pedestrian mall comes in the future?
We, on September 30th, uh, we received the responses to the RFP for Lot 6. We are currently reviewing those proposals, all of them, including them the construction of the pedestrian mall. So after our review, we will come back to you to designate a developer for parking lot 6, which again includes the pedestrian mall as part of, of the best.
Okay. Um, and so from, it looks, it looks like we're just moving one bus stop and we're moving that one block over?
That is correct. We're moving a bus stop from the current location of Gavitt North to Gavitt in East Second Street, 105 feet away. And, and for the discharge of passengers. And the layover spot will be on Church and Easter at the far side.
Um, as a, as a follow-up, in moving that bus stop, how would that affect the traffic on East Second Street? Um, because I know sometimes East Second Street can get a little backed up. How is that gonna work with a bus now stopping there? As well? Have we looked into that and what the, uh, and what the ramifications are of putting a bus stop in that area? And where exactly is it going? On that corner?
Yes, on the corner, right on the corner of, of the sec, East Second, yeah, on the East Second Street side.
So have we done like a traffic study or something? Because at that corner, the street then turns, it goes from one lane to two lanes. So have we looked at what the impact of having a bus in one of those lanes would be?
I don't think a study was done, but Transit did their own study. They looked into everything before they decided to agree with this and, and with any license agreement. I think we'll be fine.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Director Jackson mentioned that the RFP for Lot 6 included development of the pedestrian mall. So can you tell me how that was worded in, in that RFP?
Uh, well, the RFP went out on August the 11th. I can certainly send council a copy of the RFP, which includes the language around the pedestrian mall.
And can you, that'd be great if you could send that.
Yes.
Could you also summarize it, Reader's Digest version?
Yeah, I, I will send you that. It's pretty specific, but it talks about the construction of the pedestrian mall. It included the design that was done by Pononi in the RFP.
And then also in that is the, the construction of a, of a parking lot, okay?
Of, construction of, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Parking room in Lot 6?
Uh, yes. Uh, the, uh, one of the programs was additional parking for shoppers and commuters. Uh, and one of the questions that we got asked that we put an addendum to is that we're looking for an additional 100 to 150 parking spaces and, uh, other than what's required for the project itself. So this is additional. Uh, and the responses have addressed that as well.
So, so let me just see if I'm putting this all together. So we put out an RFP to construct a parking facility on Lot 6. In that RFP, it included building a pedestrian mall.
Yes.
And the result of this RFP, when you total it up, the, the parking and then the pedestrian mall is whatever dollar amount that is. Like, I'm gonna make it up to $50 million.
Right.
That $50 million is then paid by the city through a bond or other avenues, correct?
That is not correct. Uh, so, uh, the pilot, when we look at these proposals, we are looking at their financing commitments. Uh, they have those in there as well. Uh, with any project of this size, a pilot is required, uh, which I think we should expect. Uh, and, uh, it will be, depending on whose RFP we go with, uh, it'll be a fairly large project. And so the pilot itself is a financing mechanism that we have to look at. But right now, we're just through the point where we're reviewing those responses and, uh, really trying to come up with the best solution based on those responses.
Okay, so that, that's a completely different topic for me. Um, I'm really focused on who, when we award this RFP, who's paying for it?
Who's paying for the?
Construction of both elements.
Again, the way this is worded is it will be the developer's responsibility for the parking, uh, construction, and also for the construction of the pedestrian mall.
Okay, so then they'll, they will recoup their investment and whatever appropriate profit by charging for parking?
Uh, yes, they will charge for parking.
So this development, this develop, this pedestrian mall that's gonna be paid for by developers and not taxpayers is actually gonna be paid through revenue from most of the taxpayers who come down to shop and use the pedestrians. But it's not really, it's fronted by a developer and ultimately paid for by revenue that is probably gonna be substantially achieved from taxpayers.
If, if, and we're, it's a very preliminary discussion at this point, because I have not reviewed every pro forma that has been submitted. Uh, but, uh, in terms of the city, it's gonna be a net win in terms of any arrangement that we come up with. Today, we're not.
On a point of order, Council President?
I think.
With the parking deck.
Council President?
My question is, I think.
Yeah, on a point of order.
I think the, my question is, um, with Director Jackson that.
One second.
That the, um, that the revenue that they would obtain for developing this parking deck and then paying for the pedestrian mall will come through taxpayer. Not developer paid, is not paid through contributions from community, community benefit, donations through agreements with developers and pilot agreements. Um, this is just fronted by a developer and then recouped through, um, revenues aimed through parking. So we're adding to their costs, which means that that parking cost is gonna go up because they, or they're entitled to gain their, their investment in an appropriate timeline. So your parking's gonna go up accordingly based on the cost of that pedestrian mall, which, you know, I think a lot of people question the validity compared to a pandemic, but even more so as a result of the pandemic.
Well, I don't think that, I don't believe that's true, number one. Number two is we're getting zero revenue for that parking lot today, other than.
No, 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 I, let me, just so you don't waste your time. I don't, I'm not questioning the parking lot. I'm questioning the, the, the city not paying for a pedestrian mall, when in reality, we're ultimately paying for it just in a use tax for people that go downtown.
People are paying for parking today.
No, no, that's not my.
On a point of order, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm, I'm referring to the fact that the pedestrian mall will be paid for by parking.
Mayor, Mayor, you have the floor. Did you want to?
Yes, I.
Mayor of the floor, when I'm still talking to Director Jackson and trying to get her to answer my.
Yeah, he said.
He doesn't, he's not a council member. He can ask to speak, but he doesn't have the authority to do a point.
Come on, Matt. It's just.
On a point of order, Council President?
Um, before I respond, again, I would urge the councilman to read the charter, but let me make my point, please. I think it is very misleading for any council member to try to put out there misinformation, mischaracterization, when he or she doesn't understand the basics of economic development, knowing full well that this is an RFP that went out for proposals. The city does not pay for redevelopment projects. The city earns revenues. The taxpayers are not, are not in any way footing any of the costs for this development or for any other development. So I just want to put factual information out there so that the residents of Plainfield, who are listening to this council meeting or who will read the minutes, have factual information and know that taxpayers are not footing a dime for this proposed development. Every response will be evaluated on the merits, and the city will select and will present to you, the council, the best of those responses that we believe would best serve the interests of the city of Plainfield. But I don't want misinformation put out there for people to think that we are either fronting or paying, you know, down the road, a dime for this development. Okay, thank you, Council President.
Uh, no problem, Mayor. Uh, Valerie, did you have anything additional to add? Director Jackson?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that any discussion of financials is totally preliminary. There have been no discussions with any developer about the finances associated with the project at this point.
Council President, I have a follow-up question.
Yes, Councilwoman Davis?
Um, so Director Jackson, in your response to Councilman McKenna, you talked about, um, the RFP. you talked about um, the RFP asking for an additional hundred parking spaces in addition to what the requirements are for the project. Um, are these additional hundred spaces adequate for the number of units that are already on North Ave? Does that equal the number of spaces that are on North Ave currently? Or is that less than, um, do you know the answer to that?
It is more than what's provided by parking lot six. Uh, so this is replacement parking for parking lot six. Uh, so it's more than that. In terms of the overall parking puts and takes, we are still uh, developing that plan. So as you look at the other downtown properties.
Okay, so.
Replacement parking.
Okay, so it's replacement parking for parking lot six.
Yes.
So even if there was a pedestrian mall to come to North Avenue, there's no replacement parking for the parking that's currently on North Avenue?
It, it includes that parking that's on North Avenue um, in terms of, so it's the replacement parking. But if you're talking about parking for the apartment buildings that are already downtown.
Yes.
It, it is not addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
Shopper and commuter parking and parking lot six replacement parking.
Okay, thank you.
Any, uh, any further questions from any council member?
Well, I still have comments.
All right, go right ahead.
But, so just to address the mayor's comment, what I've, unlike most uh, people, I've read the charter many times and usually have it very. And there is no stipulation in there that the mayor is a member of the council. He may attend the meetings and he may participate in discussions. Um, but he does not make points of order. He does not make resolutions. He does not move resolutions and he does not vote on resolutions.
I do allow it.
Secondly, for the, for the mayor to, to put out this nonsense that people shouldn't listen to, you know, comments from a council member and rumors and misinformation. The reality is, I was asking Director Jackson legitimate, serious questions. Um, and that if, if it is so clean and clear, then the director can answer the questions and then that's fine. But the rap, but a cost on a project and then that cost by the developer has to be recouped. Understandably, they're in business to make money. That cost to recoup that comes through receipts and revenues, which then are on the people participating in that process, which is parking. So the fees will be, go up as a result of that, which means that parkers downtown will bear the brunt of that and the majority of them will be taxpayers. So the mayor can call it whenever he wants to say that the taxpayers are not footing a dime. Um, the taxpayers in the state don't necessarily foot a bill for the Garden State Parkway. Drivers foot the bill for the Garden State Parkway. Those people are taxpayers. So it's not coming out of a certain tax. It's coming out of them having, paying a direct tax. So I think it's important that, you know, we not play games with the moving. Reality is, they're, they're going to pay the fee. So that was my comment and I would appreciate it if you would send the RFP prior.
Council President.
All right ahead, Director.
Yes, we will send you the RFP, but any financial discussion of the impacts of the development, again, is totally premature. Uh, and uh, the way premature, because we negotiate terms with developers once we have designated a developer. So again, any discussion to imply uh, that things are going to increase uh, in terms of the taxpayers, preliminary. And when we look at the overall taxpayer, again, we have to look at all of the revenue and all of the costs associated with the project to the city. And that's my final comment.
I, I think that's a valid comment, but I would also tell you that if you ask the developer to, I'm sorry, are you like frustrated, Ms. Jackson? Because this is your job. You're here to answer questions.
Oh, oh. We just addressed the question.
I know it.
Comment, Ms. Jackson, so my comment.
We just addressed the question.
My comment to you is that, is that you can make a financial arrangement with, with a developer and that's perfectly legitimate and that's what cities do all the time. But the reality is, if you have, and I'm going to make up numbers, if you have a twenty million dollar parking deck and you're asking them to build a two million dollar pedestrian mall, they're not going to do that out of the goodness of their heart. They have to recoup that money and that money is going to come from taxpayers who use that parking lot. That's a reality of business. So maybe it doesn't work that way in city hall where you just raise tax and everybody has to pay them. They need to recoup their investment and they're going to do that the only way they know how, which is selling parking lot. That's it, that's a reality.
Yeah, Councilman, you're only looking at one portion of the revenue.
I'm having a conversation with you about this cost of the pedestrian mall. That's the reality. I'm not looking at the parking and where people are going to do downtown and whether that's needed or anything. That's a completely different topic. We've had that conversation. A specific piece about the funding of a pedestrian mall and how you think that doesn't get recouped by the developer. It, it is, it's going to be and they should recoup it because that's part of their cost.
Right. But I could also imagine a scenario where, I mean, we hope Plainfield is, are the ones parking there, but certainly there'll be out people outside of Plainfield uh, who will park there as well to help us recoup those costs so it doesn't squarely.
That would be great.
Yeah, and that, that's a great scenario.
I don't agree, but there's no data to fund that.
All right, so any other questions from council members? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
It'll be.
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, clerk, may I have a roll call?
You're on mute.
AJ, you're muted.
Okay, ordinance MC 202019 was moved by councilwoman, Councilwoman Mills-Ransom, seconded by Councilman Good. Roll call, Councilmembers Davis.
No.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna.
No.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills-Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President Armadi.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose this ordinance that's been adopted on first reading.
Okay, clerk, uh, read MC 2020 dash 20.
MC 2020 dash 20 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 1369 South Plainfield Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to certain property identified on the city's tax map as block six twenty-four, lot twelve. Identify the city's tax records as 1369 dash fourteen oh three, South Avenue and authorizing an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with 1369 South Plainfield Urban Renewal LLC.
Okay, uh, are there any questions from council members regarding this?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, please.
Um, Director Jackson, I know you go over this almost every time we do it and I know you probably feel like you sound like a broken record, but I think it's really important to just continue to re-edit, reiterate to residents the importance of pilots in the redevelopment process and what uh, tax exemptions, um, what that really means and why that is important to uh, to development and what really benefits the community, the city of Plainfield when we do these type of agreements. You're on mute.
Okay, so this particular project is the vacant land that's next to Dairy Queen. And uh, that particular project is going to be five stories, ground floor retail of about seventeen hundred square feet and twenty units of housing. And uh, you approved the redevelopment agreement last month. Uh, and in terms of the pilot, a pilot is certainly necessary for this project to work. Uh, there have been several people who've tried to make this project work financially. Uh, this group has uh, has uh, really worked with us to try to make this project work as well as with the planning board. So under existing taxes, if we were not to develop this project over thirty years, uh, the city share of tax revenue would be three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. In addition, uh, for the pilot over thirty years, the city share is two million, two point one million dollars uh, in terms of revenue. And so I think that's important for us to understand with this particular project. Uh, you asked about community benefits earlier. This is a smaller community benefit agreement is twenty-five thousand uh, for community benefits. Again, it's a smaller project. It's really tight financially. And uh, there is a contribution in this case, and that's the reason for the amendment to the redevelopment agreement, uh, a contribution of thirty thousand to the school district. And so again, uh, this project is very tight financially for the developer to make work. Again, it's a good deal for the city. We get to develop the property and we get additional tax revenue over the thirty-year period.
Okay, um, and just two follow-ups to that. Um, one, um, people are concerned about the number of apartments that are coming to the municipality. That's probably one of the biggest concerns that I hear when we talk about redevelopment. If you can just kind of speak to why this is the best way to go um, in terms of redeveloping and revitalizing the city as well as, um, you said it was a community benefit of thirty thousand to the school district and you may have people on uh, this council meeting who say that's not a lot. Can you just kind of speak to why we thought that that was enough to accept?
Uh, the reason we thought it was enough to accept is because it's the best that we could negotiate. Again, remember I said this project is very tight financially to make it work. That's number one. That's even why a small twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to the city for community benefits. Uh, the second thing is we are developing uh, density in and around the train station and in the commercial business district. And so this trend is common, is part of smart growth, part of the state's uh, plan, is to add density around the train station. And what we're trying to do is uh, eighty percent of the tax revenue today in the city of Plainfield comes from single and two-family homeowners. We're trying to change that ratio of eighty to twenty to more like seventy to thirty or sixty to forty. So where apartment owners uh, have, you know, those landlords are now taking on a greater share of the taxes. So that is all by design.
Thank you, um, just one last comment. I think Mr. West would appreciate it. When we talk about increasing density in the city of Plainfield, it is important that before we get to that part of increasing density that we have an accurate number of how many people are here in the city. So it's important that everybody in the city of Plainfield fills out their senses as soon as possible. Um, so when we talk about increasing density, we have real numbers and real uh, values to work off of so we know when enough is enough in terms of increasing the density in this community.
You're here.
I have a question.
Council, Councilwoman McKenna?
Um, well, one, one comment and just for, for public viewers, the community benefit reference, Councilwoman Davis mentioned particularly donations um, made, sometimes one-time donations, sometimes they can be multi-year donations uh, to the city or to different projects within the city. Um, I'm in favor of those, especially this one to the school board. We're that, um, in this one, it includes twenty-five thousand dollars to the city for a very generalized purpose. Um, I, I'm kind of not thrilled with those generalized purposes because I think that money then just goes in randomized at, at the whim of whoever um, versus having designated set aside programs that are explicitly named in these agreements and that it's understood that we're going to build a youth center, which we, you know, desperately need or things like that instead of just this generalized list of five words divided by commas that could mean anything. Um, uh, my question, in, in looking at these, and we always get them, it shows existing taxes over multiple years with assumed increases in taxes. And then we, we have the pilot agreement over multiple years. What would their taxes be each year i- if they didn't get a pilot and they built this?
What would their taxes be if?
They didn't, if they didn't get a pilot and they built this development?
Uh, they wouldn't build a development.
But let's just. In your, in your analysis, you had to have that data to have the delta.
I do have that data, uh, and I don't have it before me for this particular project. Uh, but uh, typically I don't like looking at that data or presenting that data because it is unrealistic. Uh, it means that uh, projects will get built and that's not the case. So the, the real option is what we have today or the pilot with a built-out project. And over time, uh, the pilot payments get to full taxes. That's by design. Uh, so the pilot payment for uh, the uh, uh, last year, thirty years is two hundred and three thousand dollars, almost two hundred and four thousand dollars. That is what full taxes will be practically for this project because we don't want a spike at the end of thirty years. So we try to get them to full taxes over time.
No, um, so I, I get what you're saying about not wanting to look at that, you think that you should look at that, just to see what the delta would be. And I also remember this project and I don't know that it was all that great as far as quality and, and, and the look of it. It's changed multiple times and I don't think every time a developer comes showing up um, that, that we need to, you know, that's just my opinion on it.
Yeah, uh, this project did change over time. Uh, the planning, this project has gone to the planning board several times and they have approved the site plan for this project. And so they have put in all of the demands that they would like to see in this particular project, particularly around number of units. Uh, the project uh, developer wanted more units around parking. Uh, so the planning board has been a good store in terms of defining a project uh, that makes sense for the city of Plainfield.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council members? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, clerk, may I have a roll call?
Yes, uh, MC 202020 was moved by Councilwoman Armadi and seconded by Councilman Good. Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilwoman McKenna?
No.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor want to oppose MC 202020 has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, clerk, read MC 2020 dash 21.
MC 2020 dash 21 is an ordinance to amend and supplement chapter two, Article nine, Department of Public Works to include section seventeen, division of the parking utility.
Okay, are there any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, so is this changing the parking authority? Is this creating, so is this creating a new division? And then we also have the parking authority? Or is this going to absorb the parking authority? Is my first question.
This is going to become uh, the parking utility. It's going to absorb everything. It's going to be one division, just to focus on parking itself.
Okay, so my next question is when we did the charter changes and we kind of restructured where divisions and departments would go within the city, the parking authority was moved from Public Works over to the police department. Was that correct?
Councilwoman, you know, just to interject for one quick second. We do not have a parking authority in the city of Plainfield.
I mean, that, what's the, not parking authority? What's the parking bureau? Thank you. So the parking bureau was moved from Public Works to the police department. Now, the parking utility is going to absorb the parking bureau and the parking bureau is now going to be moved back to Public Works. Is that what we're saying?
Correct, yes, it is.
Okay, and is this parking utility going to be responsible for the parking management? that we've been discussing with Director Jackson for the past few months?
Yes, all parking management, planning, et cetera, yes.
Are we looking to add more, more positions with this creation of the parking utility? Is, and is there a financial impact to the city by creating the parking utility? Are we going to utilize the structure and the employees that are already there?
We're going to use employees. And we'll look to add to it over time if needed. And that'd be based on revenues that we have this utility so we can generate needed revenue to offset everything and to, where needed, if we need additional manpower, we will do that. Based on the revenue generated from the, the parking utility. And of course, the funds that are currently in the Police Department will be transferred over to the utility, and that's how we will start doing it.
Okay.
The president may have to explain that as well?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Now, utilities are used oftentimes in municipalities to put specific focus on a particular area of operations. They're pool utilities. There are, you know, any number of utilities within municipal government. And what this does is that it puts a concentrated focus on parking. It also will move the employees who are a part of this parking utility off the operations budget, which would provide some relief on the operations side because the utility will now have its own separate budget, which will be at the back of the operating budget. So the budget that you now have, once this utility is created, you'll have an operating budget, you'll have a capital budget, as you now do, and then you'll have a utility budget. So all of the expenses of the utility will be moved from the operating budget, which would, in essence, provide some relief. Additionally, if there is need for the utility to have capital items, as long as the utility is what is known as self-liquidating, in simple terms, it means that its revenues exceed its expenditures, any debt that the utility were to incur would not be counted against the city's debt as long as the utility is self-liquidating. Additionally, any excess revenues that are generated within the utility can be moved by resolution over to the operating budget to further provide relief to our taxpayers. So it is a very good tool for this governing body to create because it makes financial sense, and it is the best way for us to address our parking needs at this time in terms of administration and management.
Other questions, follow-up questions, Councilwoman Davis?
I did have a question, but I forgot it because the mayor just started talking, but it's okay. If it comes back, I'll bring it back up.
Okay.
That's what I have for right now.
Okay, any other questions from council members?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So the, the utility is able to incur its own, its own debt through bonds? Do you have bonds?
The utility would be able to incur its own debt, but it would still have to get approval from this body.
Okay, so, and that debt is the responsibility of the taxpayers. Even though it's not counted against the cities, because it's got its own revenue source, it's still the responsibility of the taxpayers.
Yes, I guess that would be the conclusion. But the, the recommendation from the planning, the master plan was to form a utility. And again, a utility, as the mayor has indicated, is self-liquidating. Any excess revenues can go to the city's operating budget. A utility would be responsible for its own debt and debt servicing. Yes, they can go out to bonds, but they cannot go out to bonds without the approval of this body.
And then an existing employee is going to be the, the director of the utility?
I don't know the answer to that yet. We're, we've put together a, a proposed budget, and we're looking into all those puts and takes.
So we could be, okay, and how much does the parking bureau bring in right now in revenue?
It's not just the parking bureau that brings in the revenue. The revenue comes from several sources. The revenue comes from parking lot, revenue for permits. It comes from the meters, and it comes from enforcement. It's what really the parking, the parking enforcement officers really kind of manage.
What's that dollar, ma'am?
We looked at two thousand nineteen, that's about six hundred, when you add it all together, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And what, what are the costs associated with the, with the bureau and the enforcement and all that?
Right now, the cost with the bureau is just parking enforcement officers. And those enforcement officers, this is again back to parking operations and management. They are just doing enforcement. There's no management.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not questioning the, I'm not sure how many bodies there are. How much, how much do they cost?
Ron, do you remember the cost of the, where are you, Ron? Do you have it before you, the cost you're?
I don't have that in front of me, but all in, it's under two hundred thousand dollars.
Dollar, yeah.
Okay, so there's a, so there's about four hundred thousand dollars. Not going to hold you to it, Mr. Director. About four hundred thousand dollars in, in revenue, clear revenue roughly, between revenue that comes in, or I'm going to call it profit, even though we don't call it profit, but from, from revenue that comes in versus the cost of that, those particular functions, about four hundred thousand dollars.
And we believe that, that revenue can significantly increase.
It's now not in the operating budget.
Yeah.
Over to a separate budget, so the operating budget's got a four hundred thousand dollar, you know, loss, so to speak, right? Or will have.
Right now, we're talking about the utility.
Right, but the, but you're moving four hundred thousand dollars in municipal profit over to the utility and out of the operating budget.
And that can also, again, with the utility, be moved back into the operating budget. We said excess revenues can be moved back to the operating budget.
Well, just like we don't make assumptions based on what developments would pay in taxes if they were to be built and not get a pilot, let's not make assumptions that magically money's going to come out of the utility back in the operating because I'm sure that's pretty rare. Anyway, I, one other point is if it's under DPW, I'm going to ask you all the questions.
What's the question?
If, if this is under DPW, why are you answering all my questions? It's just normally that you're not DPW.
It's not directly under the DPW yet in tools.
It ain't under economic development.
Councilwoman McKenna, I can tell you that there was a committee that the mayor charged with taking a look at all of this, and a number of the cabinet members all were charged with putting together their own respective areas and coming together and helping to create this ordinance, helping to create this utility. So we all, we all worked together on this project.
I think that's great, and that's how it should be. I just, you know, the person that's going to be running it, I will answer the next question. I appreciate that.
Thanks. Any other questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a, a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Second.
Okay, clerk, may I have a roll call?
Roll call on MC twenty twenty twenty-one, Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
No.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransome?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
All right, thank you. We're going to move to public comment, but I just wanted to take a little liberty. I went on the census website. Councilwoman Davis had asked a question, and it also mentioned the census. I don't know if you can see this, but it says what our response rate currently is. I think it's at a fifty-eight point eight percent for the city of Plainfield. That's the latest data on the U.S. Census Bureau website. The New Jersey rate is a little below seventy percent, or sixty-nine percent. So we are falling below the, the, the state rate. So, you know, still, still need to do more. Still need to encourage those who haven't filled out their census to do so. And I, I just saw that the Supreme Court had just ruled on the census that it wasn't going to, that they were, were going to allow the Trump administration to shut down the census, which is, you know, not good news for, especially for, you know, cities like ours that, that are lagging behind. You know, we, we can use all the time that we can get. All right, so we'll move to public comment. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Each speaker will be allowed, allowed five minutes. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to be recognized. You'll be muted. State your name and address for the record. The floor is now open. Sam, you are unmuted. Name and address for the record, please.
Sam Sekitha Cooper, Ninety Brokaw Boulevard, Plainfield. I wanted to just speak on the fact that I first am a human being. Second, I'm a resident of this great city. Third, I am a business owner. I'm speaking to you on all those facets tonight because there is still a disconnect with communication as it pertains to doing business in the city of Plainfield. Over these past months with COVID, we, as realtors, have experienced some back and forth as it pertains to obtaining certificates of exemptions or affidavits of exemptions in order to close on properties. There was a process where we would fill out that form. It would be notarized, and because the form is outdated, there was information that would have to be obtained by the attorneys representing the buyer to confirm that the person purchasing the property would in fact be able to move into said property. It's been over six months now. That form has not been updated. And it's a three-to-four-line document that can be updated in Word, Adobe, whatever you choose. As we move forward, I am hoping that we would have a more seamless approach to the purchase process in Plainfield, which also brings me to the smoke certificate. In surrounding towns, there is one fee. Some of those fees are as little as fifty dollars, and they include their certificate of compliance. Plainfield, however, has two separate entities. You have to go to City Hall to do one process, and then you have to trek down to Fourth and Central to do the other process. Because of COVID, you've changed the process again, unbeknownst to many of the realtors or other real estate professionals in town. If you look at the website tonight, you will see that there is a form there, three pages. Doesn't say that it was updated for COVID, simply says "in lieu of inspections." You didn't think to reduce the fee when you're asking us to go take pictures, provide receipts, bring in that documentation in order to then take that certificate back over to the city in order for the certificate to be issued. There is a huge disconnect when it comes to the communication within the local businesses or other towns as it pertains to us trying to get things done within the city. I am someone that is here, that is all for all of you. I want us to look our best, always. And when other realtors from other towns are calling me and asking me, what is the process? I hear it's difficult. I, of course, can say to them, actually, no, I have a good relationship with them. Let me know what you need. I'll see if I can speak to someone. I shouldn't have to do that. I shouldn't be getting phone calls from strangers because I'm on a deal with them because they're afraid, based on a bad experience that I am sure they had within our city. So I'm asking if you could please look into how we disseminate information every time you decide to change it. I'm asking that you update the website accordingly. I'm asking that you update the forms to make it easier for us. During COVID especially, we should have streamlined some things, and in fact, it appears that things became worse. I should not have to take a smoke detector off of the wall, take pictures, and provide pictures of that in the house along with a receipt to show what the smoke certificate, I'm sorry, what the fire extinguisher looks like, and if it's the right one. And then you still charge me the same amount. You're still charging the same amount as if you're going out, which means there's no consideration on the work that we are doing in order to facilitate this transaction. I'm here for you. I need you to be here for me. So if you need to ask questions or develop some type of committee as it pertains to the processes that have continued to change, almost monthly it seems, please do so. I don't need to be a part of that committee, but I'm asking you to think about that as you're moving forward. The Building Department has now also moved. So the Building Department is no longer at the City Hall location. The benefit that the building inspection had by being in that same building was that if someone came to the counter and they had a question, they would at least be able to ask that inspector if they were there, or if there were challenges with language. You at least have one of the inspectors that's able to translate. So I'm simply asking for you to just think about some of these processes that you push out to us, and then just expect us to adapt.
The president, the speaker's time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another caller. They are now unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Timothy Priano, fourteen oh five Martine Avenue. I'm just asking in reference to the reported app that we installed in August. How has it been working out for reporting illegal dumping and everything else? Because we haven't heard anything since you announced it. And just to see if we have to publicize it more to get it done so that people are using it. Because we still are running into the mattress on Stell always, but that's the sort of life over there on that curve and the illegal jumping. So just finding out, how's that updated? And has it been working for the city, for the residents? That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Priano. At the conclusion of all speakers, I'll give directors an opportunity to address the question. Let's see, is there anyone? There, there's a caller. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Marie Anne Sari, Wat Chung Avenue. I'm very happy to hear the mayor say that he only wants factual information. On that, we're on the same page. Last month, the disrespectful calculating manner that the deer kill was pushed through should be of concern to all residents. Using hype and promoting misinformation, the agreement of September twenty nineteen was disregarded with no attempt on the part of the administration to resolve with non-lethal ways, which included education and personal responsibility. Those are the only things that will guarantee long-term and satisfying results. Actually, we should all be so lucky to own property that becomes habitat for wildlife. But I understand some people may not. But I understand some people may not want close interaction with deer. However, with no fact-based science, this mayor caved to the hunter-run program of Union County, whose only method is brutal killing of wildlife. And when complaints continue, all they do is say, let's extend the kill, but make sure you leave a stock for the next season. New Jersey tourism counts hunting. In fact, there's only about 45 days in the entire year when there is no government-sponsored killing of wildlife occurring. Last month's decisions max of one rooted in personal and political favor, not concerned for the greater good of Plainfield. I am requesting that the council honor the 2019 decision, which was cooperation between residents and administration. You were all very, very happy with that. I'm sure you recall it. 2020 has been brutal enough without giving more control of our city to outside forces, and that only guarantees more harm, greater mistrust of this administration. Please let us refer to the 2019 decision. It will work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, seeing no other callers. Does any director want to address any statistics or updates on the Report-it app? How that's going? Okay. I think there's just.
You were looking for stats on the Report-it app?
Yeah, just if you have any updates on the Report-it app.
I have any figures in front of me. I would have prepared if I knew you asked me the stats, but we have been getting quite a number of reports, and we've been ensuring that we close the loop on every report that comes in. I'd be happy to get you those figures tomorrow.
Or next meeting, you know, it's not a rush. But you can just tell us about it next meeting, that's fine.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Council President, before we go, if Director Dabney can address some of Ms. Cooper's concerns. I think the biggest concern of hers that stood out to me was the fact that people were going to the building department. Because the two departments are separated, it kind of, it kind of impeded on the flow of information. If people had questions before, everybody was in one spot for them to ask their questions, but now it sounds like they have to go from building to building. If I heard her correctly, is there a way that we can kind of, because everybody has phones, is there a way that we can kind of just streamline that so we don't have residents going from building to building when they don't have to?
Okay.
And also address the part about the language barrier that exists now because the two departments are separated.
Go right ahead, Director.
Yeah, so just to answer your question, and as far as that, the language barrier, there's not one. We have Latino individual over in inspections, and whatever we need across the street, we will have them go across the street. And where construction is currently located is directly across the street from City Hall, and everyone's being told where to go for that. And because construction and property maintenance is two separate bureaus, pretty much. Property maintenance deals with the properties, and construction deals with the building. So there's no problem with any of that. To my knowledge, Ms. Cooper knows the numbers, she can always call me, and we'll always look at the forms, see what the forms are like, do correct them. And no one's been denied, and will be denied, right now, even with this pandemic, from having not certificate of compliance, or sale or rental. We've been dealing with that over and over again, the exemption forms. The only problems she may have, she can always just call me, contact me, and we'll look into that, and I'll just follow up on that. But there's been no one being denied anything, and where the two boroughs are located, it's going to work in fine. Construction is directly across the street from City Hall, and everyone's been put on notice exactly where they're located.
So, just to follow up, I think the concern isn't where it's located. I think the concern is having to go back and forth unnecessarily, especially now that the front door of City Hall is closed. Now people have to walk all the way around to the back, I think is really the concern. If we can, just kind of, if we could just kind of like find a way to just make it more convenient for residents, and not just Ms. Cooper, but all residents that come in. And also, she spoke about it being different fees at different times or something. Can you just kind of speak to that as well?
Well, yes, the fee schedule has not changed, the fee schedule is the same that Ms. Cooper's talking about. She has to just bring it to my attention so I can look into. And as far as, and repeat that again, reiterate what I said before, property maintenance is separate from construction. When you're doing construction, building permits, you go to construction, that's the building division which is across the street. Anything dealing with property maintenance itself would be right in City Hall. So there's two separate bureaus, pretty much. Construction's across the street, for anything new construction, has nothing to do with property maintenance. So if you're dealing with construction, permits for construction, et cetera, you'll go across the street, 508 Wachung, across the street from City Hall. Anything dealing with property maintenance will stay right in City Hall, City of Building, or inspection, et cetera. Those type of inspection, property maintenance inspections, or certificate of compliance, et cetera, that's where that will come out of.
Any follow-up questions, Councilwoman Davis?
No.
I mean, I think that, you know, they're good questions. I think we all have an interest in seeing that people have a pleasant experience when they do business with the city, regardless of what department it is. And, you know, we could always do better, no matter what department it is. So, you know, we just have to be receptive to feedback generally, and see how we can improve our processes if they need improvement, you know. So I thank the caller for their comments, and I thank you, Councilwoman Davis, for following up as well. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To close.
A closed public comment? I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Council President, before we do that, it looks like there are two people with their hand raised.
Oh, okay. People, thank you. Okay, so can we unmute? Got a couple more people, great. All right, we, you are now unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gloria Binkowski, 1117 Woodmere Place in Plainfield. So I have a couple of comments on a couple of different topics. The first is, I'd like there to be some kind of resolution between the mayor, seemingly interrupting, it seems specifically Sean McKenna. And I wonder if there is a group, like the New Jersey League of Municipalities, or the Ethics Commission that can mediate this problem? Because it seems that Mr. Hakaday, if he's the individual who needs to make the decision on Mr. Map's behavior, he might feel a little intimidated, seemed that way to me. And of course, what might be in some of our minds is the recent behavior of our, of one particular party, presidential and vice presidential candidates during the recent debates. So it would be reasonable to have this kind of decided, one way or the other. And I'd be happy to try and investigate this. Maybe one of the council people could try and sort this out as well with the two groups I mentioned, or perhaps they can suggest another group. I also wanted to read, to voice my support for Marie Anne Sari's comments about the deer kill. I won't repeat what she said, I think you will remember that, but I also can send you to the Facebook page of Plainfield Area Compassionate Voters for a more detailed, perhaps, description of a number of our thoughts. And in contrast to Mayor Map's comments last month, there are more than two or three people in this city who support nonviolent interactions with wildlife. We had, through our, through our events, we have a petition where over 100 people from Plainfield have signed. So I do hope you reconsider and rescind the deer kill resolution, and let's go back to the 2019 ordinance. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else there? I think that was the last caller. Thank you for your comments regarding that. In terms of the back and forth between the mayor and Councilman McKenna, Ms. Gloria, I'll accept full responsibility for that. As providing, presiding officer of this meeting, it's my responsibility to conduct an orderly meeting. So if at any time it is not orderly, it is, it is my failing. I'm aware that, you know, I do have the authority to allow whoever to speak, whether it's the mayor, or councilperson, or members of the community, that is my authority. Am I correct, Counselor Manchello?
Yes, Council President, and if I could just briefly elaborate. The mayor is afforded, under the Charter and the Code, the right to participate in council meetings. The only thing the mayor cannot do is he cannot vote. However, the mayor in this instance, he respectfully requested to be heard by you, Council President. You gave the mayor the floor for him to speak on that issue. And as Council President, you have the right, if you believe that the mayor's participation advances any topic that the council is discussing, it is your right as Council President to call on the mayor. So what the mayor did was appropriate under the Code and the Charter, and what you did in response was also appropriate. So the actions taken tonight by the mayor and you, Council President, were in complete compliance, and nothing was escaped.
One quick point, if I could ask Mr. Manchello, if you would write a memorandum to the council, or to me, and I can share it, or whatever you want to do, and outline the, that decision there, because the Charter states that the mayor can participate in the discussions. It does not say that the mayor has the ability to call for a point of order, or has any procedural impact. There's a separation of powers. Him participating in the conversation, requesting as a, as a non-member of the council to participate is in the Charter. I've never said it wasn't. Him having a point of order and having to, and being able to jump in when this is a council meeting, and he is a guest who can participate, is the point. So if you would write that up, you don't have to answer it now, write it up so it's clear, so that the mayor's clear on his roles and responsibilities, that he does not have the ability to do a point of order and make.
And I, Councilman McKenna, I'd be happy to answer that, both in writing and to you now, and to say that the mayor, whether he calls it a point of order, or he just asks to be heard by the Council President, he has the right to make that request, and if the Council President grants him that request, he can speak.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that.
That's exactly what happened tonight.
But if you would write out that memo and clearly define and interpret the Charter as it's, as it's written, on the, on the mayor's participation, because it is rather clear that there's a delineation in the two bodies. So if you just do that, when you get a chance, you know, by the next meeting.
You will.
You know, I would posit that, you know, a point of order or orderly discussion adds to the productivity of the meeting. That's something that certainly would be helpful, and adds to the discussion, so.
I agree.
That's why I would allow it.
I agree, but I would, I would ask the Council President to look up a point of order when the mayor, as a guest, is interrupting a council member because he does not like the flow of dialogue. So if he wants to participate and wait his turn and ask to speak, I get that. But a point of order is to interrupt because there's, there's an issue with, with, with the process. There was no issue with the process, I was asking questions of a director. So I think that needs to be clear, and maybe we all need to just read that point of order concept and understand where that comes from.
Council President, I would also like something to discuss around the code of conduct associated with council members as well. We're here to respond to questions, not be berated as directors. So I would appreciate that. I respectfully answers questions, but I'm not here to get a lecture on my conduct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll go back to the video, because I don't believe I questioned your conduct. If I ask that you answer a question, or I state that you gave me information that wasn't related to the question, then that has nothing to do with conduct, that has the fact to do that I'm trying to get an answer to the question or not.
Thank you, Councilman.
So that's the point there.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. All right. So we can now entertain a motion to close public comment?
It'll be.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? Okay, public comment is now closed. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moving.
Aye.
Okay.
Second, I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Opposition, abstentions? All right. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.